Call the meeting to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome back everyone to our first in-person meeting. We'll have our roll call, please.
Campbell?
Here.
Fournier?
Here.
Goodenough?
Here.
Hammond?
Here.
Krap?
Here.
Mensah?
Here.
Voorhees?
Here.
Excellent. Right, we will move on to announcements, acknowledgements, communications, and reports. We have the declaration ending the state of emergency that was enacted on June 7th, 2021. So I guess I will go ahead and read that. The City of Mount Clemens Declaration rescinding our state of emergency. Whereas on March 31st, 2021, I Mayor Laura Krap declared a state of emergency for the City of Mount Clemens. And whereas MCL 30.410B requires action by the City Commission to extend an emergency declaration in excess of seven days. Whereas on April 5th, 2021, the City of Mount Clemens City Commission took action to extend the state of emergency for 90 days. Whereas that action by the City Commission authorized the mayor to end the state of emergency prior to its expiration. Whereas I have concluded that the conditions requiring the state of emergency have significantly abated. Now therefore, I Mayor Laura Krap hereby rescind the state of emergency in Mount Clemens effective 12:01 a.m., June 7th, 2021. City of Mount Clemens. So I am really excited that we are all here and that this is the first meeting that Mr. Johnson gets to actually join us in person. So welcome.
And Commissioner Goodenough.
Yeah, and Commissioner Goodenough, that's right. All right, we'll move on to 4B, the Juneteenth Proclamation. Whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1st, 1863, formerly abolishing slavery in the United States of America. And whereas when Union Army General Gordon Granger landed at the Texas port city of Galveston, Galve- right? Galveston, thank you, that was in Texas. In 1865, as the Civil War drew to a close, one of his first actions was to read General Order Number 3, which stated all slaves are free and former masters and slaves have absolute equality of personal and property rights. And whereas the main goal in having Juneteenth celebration is to commemorate and perpetuate the heritage, culture, and contribution of African-Americans. And whereas June 19th has a special meaning to African-Americans is called Juneteenth, combining the words June and 19th and has been celebrated by African-American communities for 155 years. And now therefore, I Laura Krap, Mayor of the City of Mount Clemens, on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby declare June 19th, 2021 as Juneteenth in the City of Mount Clemens, Michigan, and urge all residents to become more aware of the significance of this celebration in African-American history and in the heritage of our nation and city. And witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of Mount Clemens to be affixed this 19th date of June 2021. So we'll, we'll sign it on that date. Thank you very much, everyone. All right, we'll move on. Sorry, it takes a second. To Agenda Item 5, adoption of the agenda. We don't have any other announcements, do we?
No ma'am.
Okay.
Mayor Krap, I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Support.
Very good. Roll call, please. Oh, sorry, Mr. Voorhees, Commissioner Voorhees and Commissioner Fournier. And then we'll have a roll call, please.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Goodenough?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Krap?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Okay, this is the portion of the meeting that is far less complicated when we're in person. So I'm looking forward to that tonight. We have the opportunity for public participation. At this time, what we ask is that you approach the microphone, you give us your full name and your residential address so we can state that for the record, and then we have a three-minute time limit. If anyone would like to address the public, now would be the time.
Mayor Krap, City Commissioners, nice to see everybody in person again. George Cale, residential address is 19145 Devonshire Street, Beverly Hills, Michigan. Property owner here in Mount Clemens over 30 years, 20 grand app, adjacent to the historic Thomas Edison Depot. Mr. City Manager, thank you for the response on the previous questions I had asked at the last City Commission meeting specific to the marijuana issues that we have before us. Obviously, I'm a strong proponent of us opting into the Right Act, but I'm also a strong proponent of us keeping the Medical Act intact as it is and not repealing the previous ordinance adopted by this body a couple of years ago. Obviously, you might have users who would want to partake on the medical side, who would be restricted from obtaining their, if you want to call it, source by not allowing them that privilege. If it's a husband and wife, one who enjoys it recreationally, one who enjoys it medically, we'll go to Hazel Park, we'll go to Warren, we'll go somewhere else. So strongly discourage abandoning or repealing the previous ordinance. You want to have a vertically integrated type of policy to where both of those are promoted, established, and of course, Mark did accordingly. I may have misrepresented the second question on the response on the permits. My question was with the originally awarded permits to the applicants. With the Gibraltar, Mr. Gibraltar's site, is the same applicant that was licensed with the State of Michigan, either as a pre-qualified marijuana operator or as an existing marijuana operator, the same entity that renewed back in December? If it was, I believe, VB and JG Inc., who was the license holder, for instance? The applicant was the license holder. Was it the same license holder that renewed? Or was there a change in that entity or a change in that ownership? Thank you very much and look forward to working with you on this.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission?
Hi, Patrick Evert, Judah, 138 North Mount Gracie. Just wanted to go on record about the email that I sent earlier concerning item number 9A. There's a link that's all attached to it, it's got five different articles, but it's all focused on Leamington, Ontario. The reason why I picked Leamington because you can actually see the lights from here. Leamington is technically like 40 miles from, from Mount Clemens. And you can actually see the glow of the lights there. And the reason why I'm discussing this is because of the outdoor grow or the allowance of outdoor growing. If you know, you have like, for me personally, marijuana is medical. So medical should be grown in a controlled environment. So to have something like that, you can't just put it out in outdoors, you know? So you have to control the environment, control every variable. So you either have to have a roof on it of some sort, so this is a greenhouse. Well, this is an LED operation and you can see this from over 40 miles away. So the environmental impact that lights have, like light pollution, is very intense. I'm hoping that the commission would consider a no vote on the outdoor, whether it's medical or adult use. The environmental impact is crazy. So it takes one lumen to create photosynthesis. So photosynthesis is what the plant uses to grow, right? So one lumen, imagine like being under 1,000 watt light and that's like 140,000 lumens. So this is the amount of power that this is using. So there's a huge impact on this environmentally, and if you're just around the community, just to see that glow, I can't imagine just like living in Alaska and it's like 24-hour sun. You know, it won't be like the same type thing, you know, if you're in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission?
Randy Buckman, 40800 Executive Drive, Harrison Township. To address the previous comment, I am a proponent for the outdoor grow and it would be medical and recreational. And there are licensed medical grows processing that are outdoors well and some prefer outdoor with the natural sun to their medicine. In regards to the light, there would be no light, that's actually better for us. There are, the less light, the better. Where the plant's in a natural cycle, it's one time a year. Some amount of light would be for the off-season when there is not strong sun. And you want to run year-round, you'd be looking to do one harvest during the summer and follow the regular seasons of the year. In regards to the odor mitigation, odor's not a new problem for industry. I mean, there's cattle farms, waste water treatment centers, waste dumps, et cetera. So there is a tremendous amount of infrastructure that can be done to mitigate it. Not saying that every single waste plant does use it, but I did bring some information, I had 10 copies if you want to look at it. This would be an all-natural substance that's misted into the air around the perimeter of an outdoor facility. And we would set it up that whatever direction the wind's blowing, we'd have the controls wired so if the wind's blowing this direction, it's only misting that side so it's not misty onto the plants, even though it is all natural botanical turpents, et cetera. That it's not masking, it should bond with the smell and mitigate it, so. May I approach?
Yes, please.
Pass this down?
Yep. Put it on the ends, yep, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wants to address the commission? Go ahead.
Mickey Weiss, 18200, Terra Drive, Clinton Township. First of all, I want to thank everyone that helped us this past weekend with our car cruise. It was very well received. It was wonderful to be out and about and just see real people and not be doing a Zoom. So I want to give thanks to our Streets Department for all the work that they did. It's a lot of work to go from a show to a cruise and they were stellar out there helping us and we really appreciate it. I also want to remind everyone that we have our Uptown Movie Night this Saturday, November, or November, right? This Saturday, June 12th. And doors open at 7 o'clock. The movie will probably start around 9, 9:30 because we have to wait till it's dark enough. The movie will be Ghostbusters. And we have three of the Ghostbuster clubs that will be on-site doing activities and games and things with the children before the movie. We have concession stands and also the restaurants will have some specials for the families and for the kids. I also would like to announce that Patrick Lindner Barry and myself will be the new co-chairs for the Santa Parade coming up November 20th. We would like to invite everyone, churches, schools, anyone that would like to be a participant or a volunteer or a sponsor to please contact my office, 586-469-4168. We would love to have participation from everyone in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to. Oh, yes, we have, oh, we have somebody on Zoom, okay.
Jerome Crawford.
Okay.
Good evening, can everybody hear me okay?
No.
Yep, pretty good.
Still no?
Very little.
We can hear, we can hear you a little bit, if you can speak up just a little bit.
How about now, everybody?
That's great, yep, perfect.
Is that better?
Yep.
Awesome, awesome. So first to introduce myself, my name is Jerome Crawford. I am the Director of Legal Operations and Social Equity for Pleasant Trees. Work alongside Randy Buckman, our CEO, who just spoke a moment ago. Just wanted to share some additional quick follow-up notes, kind of echo some points that he noted on with respect to outdoor grows. You know, that's an important issue that's being discussed tonight. So thank you to Mayor Krap and the entire commission for the opportunity to speak before you all. Just quickly, I'll note my role and part, I'm also a lawyer by trade, but I also help lead, along with Randy and our leadership team, our social equity effort. So that is basically, in layman's terms, basically as we do well, it's very important that we do good, understand the history of the cannabis industry, something we take on head-on to make sure that we're making positive impacts in the communities that we do work in. Most notably, as FXU went through a few different pillars, if you will. And the one of them I want to talk about is number one, it's called access to value chain or participation in the industry. And in particular, when we enter into community, we make sure that we give back and support a community that supports us. As Randy noted, in addition to certain aspects of the outdoor grow, very importantly, we love to talk about job creation. So that's how we create participation, with bringing in our operations and if we're granted an opportunity and ultimately receive a license to operate, we'd be able to create a number of jobs. For instance, our estimation is that we'd have about 125 jobs to be created just in our coming into the facility. And namely, with an outdoor grow, we estimate we'd be able to get as high as 250 jobs that will be created by that, against an additional footprint, additional jobs to be created. And beyond that, we're, you know, currently located, our headquarters are in Harrison Township, where we have an indoor grow, our headquarters as well. And we're a company about 150 employees, I think it's safe to say close to 100 or so from those employees actually are residing in Macomb County or in very nearby areas. So we find it very important naturally that where we sit is where we want to be able to bring our talent in from. So definitely want to talk about the importance of that. And then beyond that, just to sort of dovetail, to close my timeout and be respectful of schedules, is that for anything that we do, it's very important to mention we do well, we do good. The other three pillars of our social equity plan, I find important to share, number two, education, which basically means educating the community around us about safe use, de-stigmatizing truth about cannabis history, if you will, as well as for our employee base. Number three, legislation and advocacy, so we do a lot of work in the community making sure that we're advocating for criminal justice reform, you name it, new and advanced laws that are more fair for all. And then lastly, what we call good neighbor. So that falls back part and parcel with this community, that anything we do, we're looking at local organizations, charities, you name it, because we have such an onus to want to do good work, finding who's doing it already and finding meaningful ways to partner with them and to be able to bolster those efforts. But number one thing I want to share with respect to today's conversation for the outdoor grow, of course, is the job duration and the ability that has to do. And of course, just echo all the points that Randy already made with respect to that. So thank you so much for your time and I will pass the microphone. Thank you again.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the commission? Do we have anyone else on line? We're good, okay. All right, we will go ahead and move on to Agenda Item 8, Approval of Minutes.
I move to approve the work session and the regular City Commission meeting minutes for May 17, 2021.
Moved by Commissioner Hammond?
Support.
Support by Commissioner Mensah? And everyone else? Oh, we did, oh, I'm sorry. All right, well, we can. We can finish the minutes and we'll, we'll go back. Roll call, please.
Fournier?
Yes.
Goodenough?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Krap?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go back to Agenda Item 7. Sorry about that. Being in-person things throwing me off. Administrative responses to issues or questions raised during previous meetings. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Cale, who just spoke a few minutes ago, asked two questions at the previous meeting. The first concerned the use of the term conditional license. Actually, that's not the term that we use. It does not appear in state law or in a Mount Clemens ordinance. The city does use the term conditional permit. To clarify, the permits approved by the city contain conditions which the recipient agreed to meet and which must be met for the permit to be issued. Second question was about renewal of permits, and that's only a permit holder can renew a permit. I think that answers the question that was asked tonight. If you're not a permit holder, you cannot renew a permit.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to now Item 9, General Business. We're going to discuss the proposed Marijuana Business Ordinance, the outdoor grow. We have a motion. Mr. Johnson, go ahead.
We had a special work session on this before the last commission meeting. I think it may be more productive to break this down and discuss the four significant areas that were identified by the city attorney in his cover letter. And then when we have clear direction on these, a new draft of the complete ordinance can be submitted for commission consideration. The significant areas that were identified was, in the order of his letter, was one, that he's replaced the Marijuana Facilities Review Committee with the City Manager reviewing applications and making a recommendation to the City Commission, the City Commission being the only decision-making body. And the purpose of this was to prevent potential Open Meetings Act challenges. Number two, the ordinance as presented maintains the same number of authorized establishments as was in the Medical Marijuana Facilities Ordinance and creates a preference for co-location of recreational establishments with authorized medical marijuana facilities. Three, the ordinance prohibits designated consumption establishments and micro businesses as well as temporary marijuana events, all of which are permissible under the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act. And four, the ordinance continues the prohibition on outdoor growing as is contained in the existing Medical Marijuana Facilities Ordinance. Well, we'd like to discuss each of those areas. We want to change the order. We think that the prohibition on outdoor growing or whether there should be a prohibition on outdoor growing should be the first item discussed because we feel the decision on outdoor growing will impact some of the other areas of discussion. So we're proposing to have a conversation tonight, which is limited to just the topic of allowing or not allowing outdoor grow facilities in the proposed ordinance. They are not allowed under the current Medical Marijuana Facilities Ordinance and they were not allowed in the proposed Marijuana Business Ordinance as submitted for the work session on May 17th. The reasons we've identified for wanting to possibly prohibit outdoor grow facility mostly relate to security and odor. It would be much more difficult to provide adequate security for an outdoor facility. It would also be, I think, impossible to contain odors. Even the indoor grow facilities nearby seem to be unable to completely contain odors. But I am told by people involved in the industry that the odor problem is limited to about three or four weeks of the plant's grow cycle. And we're probably with an outdoor grow facility here only looking at one grow cycle per year. So it's probably three or four weeks a year that we would have an odor problem. The motion was written to go either direction. There's a choose one, prohibit, or allow, so.
So we'll discuss?
Yeah, I think you need to discuss before you put the motion on the table in this case.
And when you do put the motion on the table, I would suggest that you add, in the event the City Commission adopts a Marijuana Business Ordinance, the way it reads now is as if the city has already adopted such an ordinance. So I think that should be clarified. And one other point, in my, the materials that were sent to the commission for the last meeting, the listing of the four items that I thought the commission had needed to address was not meant to be in any priority order. They were the four areas that I thought were important. It wasn't that this was the least important of the four.
Duly noted. All right, so it looks like we're going to try to tackle this portion of the ordinance. It seemed as though when you're looking at, it's a very large, all-encompassing ordinance and so I think all of us felt as if we needed some focus and that way we can really hone in and make sure we get the ordinance that the city deserves. So today, grow operation, our outdoor grow operation. And so if we can just kind of all agree to try to keep to that topic, I know that might be difficult at times, but we can do that, so. Does anybody have any thoughts on that?
I would like to see the adult use and the medical separate because under.
We just were talking about how we were going to stick to the topic of.
Let me finish.
Okay, well.
Okay? Because under this, it says, under the medical that we already have, it says that medical must be grown in a controlled environment. We have a whole list of things. So if we're going to go to outside, that is a very uncontrolled environment. You've got things like, you know, there's a lack of control there. You're talking pests and mites, mold, you're talking rain, sunshine, lack of rain, lack of sunshine, and you're talking people. It's, I think it'll be harder to control people in an outdoor grow facility. So, and again, whether it's one lumen or 12 lumens or 49 lumens of light, we have senior complexes, senior apartment buildings right there. So I, I'm not in favor of growing outdoors.
I think, I guess there's different ways that you can do outdoor grow. You can use light, you cannot use lights, so I guess.
So it seems like maybe we could put that in the ordinance?
Yeah, that's an idea.
Right, maybe no lights? No artificial lights? Couldn't you?
Well, you could put a number of things in the ordinance. I would, I would just mention one thing, and that was, this morning I looked at a number of other ordinances that I reviewed in terms of drafting, the first draft of this ordinance. And I'm unaware of any, other than on the western side of the state. I'm not familiar with any municipality that is allowing outside growing. By way of example, Wayne, Marquette, Ann Arbor, East Lansing, Centerline, Harrison Township, Battle Creek, all prohibit outdoor grow. And there may be some places that did allow it, but I'm not aware of it. I haven't seen them.
Yeah, I've struggled with this for some time now. I had the opportunity to go to Pleasant Trees and see their operation in Harrison Township and was very impressed. I mean, they do an amazing job there in terms of security and. But what I'm, the lumens issue is a new issue for me and I didn't, wasn't aware of it and I need to now factor that into my decision. But the odor is a problem. And even though it's only three weeks out of the year, you, if you live there, it's still a problem for you. And I believe that anyone can comply with the security. There's, there's way, Pleasant Trees was Fort Knox, I mean, it was amazing security they had there. But, and I believe that you can replicate that in an outdoor facility. But the odor is something that we, there's, perhaps there's something in this misting business that I can read up on, but I, I just don't know how you control that. And for those residents right there, when the wind blows the right way, it's a little concerning that they will have to deal with this for three or four weeks out of the year. And when we did the original medical ordinance, I, that was one of our promises to the residents that it would be indoors, that it would be controlled, that they wouldn't have to deal with this. And so, that's where I'm really struggling, is we made that, we limited that, and to expose, I know it's a small group of people, but it's still our residents over there.
With indoor grow, they're doing that year-round, correct? So, there could be odor year-round?
I don't think it would be as strong for those four weeks. And with an outdoor grow, there's only one season and four weeks out of the whole year. So, it is limited, at which then I think, okay, four weeks, but I don't live there either.
But also, like, if you drive through Harrison Township, parts of Harrison Township and other cities, you can smell the indoor grow as well. So, I think, either way, indoor or outdoor, you're gonna have some type of odor.
Oh, yeah. Just drive down ninety-four. I probably know the answer, but we'll just have you put it out there.
As I said before, I don't want to have anything to do with marijuana on any aspect. I was a school teacher for thirty years, and every kid that started with pot, it was a tragic story, so I don't want to have anything to do with it.
I'm just moving down the table here, so.
You already heard my opinion.
We heard from Commissioner Menzner.
I have a friend of mine that lives in Harrison Township on the other side of the expressway, and there are times when that aroma and that fragrance is coming out of him. Depends on a lot of things, you know? If you have a low ceiling, you know, it's gonna happen. It's a tough one, but I, I just, I would rather have it contained than be out in the environment. So, my idea would be to not have an outdoor grow.
Well, for me, it doesn't bother me one way or the other. I would, I would be for the outdoor grow. Doesn't bother me one way or the other. It's gonna be, I agree with Commissioner Hammond, it's gonna be a smell. If you go around the corner, if you're on there before, there's still gonna be a smell. It's been here for many, 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 many years, so I don't understand what the issue is. I really don't. It's been here for years. It's not going anywhere. It's a billion-dollar business.
Someone reminded me of that, the wastewater treatment plant is also right there.
Yeah, that's bad.
And if the wind blows, certain way.
A certain way, that, yeah. That's not a fun smell either.
But, that doesn't negate any smell being an issue or not, you know?
No, it doesn't.
So, but, yeah, it's, in my opinion, I, I think it's one of those situations of, you know, it's not, there's not, no perfect answer. We know that in order for Gibraltar to work, that that's what we're discussing, that would really be the only site in the city that an outdoor grow could be, could be contained, right? Because it would have enough acreage, any other place, it couldn't.
It's the only site that ever applied for a grow license as well.
Well, that too.
There were no other applications for grow licenses by anyone.
So, there is the only, only, Gibraltar is the only grow operation?
Under the, under the medical marijuana ordinance.
Under medical.
So, that could be also the factor of, it's not as if, if you allow the outdoor grow, you're not allowing it to be in any field of Mount Clemens, you know? You would, it would have to be, in my mind, it would have to be highly regulated, you know? A site that has a certain number of acreage, a site that has, you know, a certain security outlined, a site that has odor control, I mean, I, I think, it could, in my mind, I couldn't vote yes with a clear conscience without it being highly regulated, where we know we're protecting, we're protecting residents just as much as we would if it was indoors, right? So, and I think that's possible by the things that I've heard. I understand the concerns about it, but I know that there are concerns for an indoor grow as well. So, I would be, I would be a yes if, if we could make some very stringent parameters for it. So, with, somebody's gotta make a motion then if we're gonna not discuss it for...
Is there a limit of the number of plants that can be grown in, on, on the property of Gibraltar?
Under, under the adult use statute, you can have, I forget the term they use, but it's two thousand plants is the largest. On the, on the medical, you can stack, they're Class A, B, and C, and you can stack them, and my understanding was that they wanted, and Class C was fifteen hundred plants, and they were going to stack at least three licenses, permits.
On the medical?
Yes.
I'm just, I was just trying to think of how many plants that site would have to sustain in, in order to actually be profitable. You know, when you're only talking one grow season, one crop, I guess as it is, how many plants can you put on that property to make that, you know, to make that profitable?
I have no idea.
I kind of, I feel like government should stay out of that, like, that's a business's decision. That, you know, I, I don't wanna legislate if your business can be profitable or not, like, that's...
Well, I wanna legis, if, if, there's a big difference between putting two thousand plants out there and putting ten thousand plants out there.
I agree with you, I can see...
That's the angle I'm looking at.
I get that, but profitability, it's not my concern. The, my concern is if it's gonna be too smelly, that, that's your point, Denise, that would be understandable.
Well, there's a big difference between two thousand plants and ten thousand plants, whether it's for profitability, but you increase that to ten thousand, you have tenfold the smell, tenfold, you know, I think the number of problems.
Let me add that when I said the two thousand, I am not sure whether or not you can stack those. So, don't quote me as saying it's limited to two thousand, because I am not sure of that. Under the recreational act, you may be able to stack them, which would lead you to more, like you have under the medical marijuana act.
Is that something we can, we can say, you can only, on this site, you know, can we put that in?
We would have, we would look at it to see if we can...
The whole thing about this, though, really, is that it is for one site. Can we say with certainty that that is the only site we can have a grow at?
Well, number one, I'd have to, under any circumstance, it has to be an industrial or light industrial or industrial zone property. Number two, I'm, if Brian were here, he could probably tell us, I'm not aware of any other potential sites that would seem to be something that someone would choose as a grow site.
Because that's important, right, too, for this?
Well, that's quite different.
If we're writing this ordinance basically or making these changes for the Gibraltar site, or the, if there is no other opportunity, if you will. I mean, profitability doesn't even really enter into it, because having one outdoor grow out there is certainly not gonna make anybody profitable, but it's what they're going to do with the rest of that site, right? There were other permits given out there, and I know we wanna keep it to, to the, we're talking about grow as if, as if it's a general topic. This is one topic, one place, that's what we're doing here.
But I would caution you to, to keep in mind that, A, they haven't applied yet, B, you haven't made a determination as to how many permits you're going to issue of any category, and C, I, I don't want this to be interpreted as if Gibraltar is automatically approved.
Right, right. But that site we're talking about, not the people, right? We're talking about a site.
And the site did have permits.
Right.
Well, for medical...
Yes, for medical marijuana, and nothing has happened there yet.
Can you, I'm, I'm sorry, on the indoor grow, isn't there an acreage requirement?
In the medical ordinance, there was a building size requirement.
Eight, ten acres.
And I think it had ten acres in there as well. And that's in the new ordinance, or the draft of the ordinance.
That's for a grow?
Does anyone wanna?
Yes. I'm just trying to be clear here. So, I know we're talking about a site, Soldier Water has the permit.
For medical?
For medical. And I hear a lot, residents and so on, speaking about what are they gonna do with that site? It's off the light, this is the opportunity, 'cause we're talking about a site.
Well, except, well, yes, but except for one thing. As the manager and his administrative response pointed out, they have a conditional permit. They don't have a permit yet for even medical. They have a conditional permit that is conditioned upon them doing a number of things. Same thing for the, the permit, the other permit for dispensary. They have to do certain things, and they haven't done those things yet. So, what I'm saying is, it's not a lead pipe cinch that Gibraltar has a conditional permit. They have until December to comply with those conditions, or request an extension of time. But right now, they do not have a permit that is in operation, obviously.
But I was going to, it's a step forward to get the site up and going, I guess?
I'm not sure if you have they applied, and we have...
Right, that's what I was going with it.
Okay, so if everyone feels comfortable with their comments and doesn't have anything further, we'll need a motion, one way or the other. Remember, we, like Mr. Murray's suggestion of...
You can utilize the motion that's there, but in front of it, add, "In the event the city commission adopts a marijuana business ordinance, it should prohibit, allow, choose one, outdoor grow facilities."
But when you say the motion, please choose one.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, okay.
So, somebody wrote that down to me.
In the event.
Yes.
I did write down.
I like that, okay. All right, would anyone like to go ahead?
Okay.
Go for it.
I don't know if we're all, if someone's clear, go ahead and jump for it, but if not, "In the event the city adopts..."
The city commission.
So, "In the event the city adopts an outdoor grow ordinance, I move the marijuana business ordinance should allow outdoor grow facility, facilities."
Moved by Commissioner Hammond?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Goodenough? Roll call, please. Oh, I guess we have to say, any, any other further comments? Roll call, please.
Goodenough?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Crapp?
Yes.
Menzner?
No.
Voorhees?
No.
Campbell?
No.
Fournier?
No.
Okay, motion fails. All right, we'll go on to Agenda Item Nine B. Approved Contract for Building and Trade Inspections. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, pursuant to the city's strategic plan and upon direction received from the city commission during budget process, city administration solicited this proposal to provide building official plan review, building, electrical, plumbing, and mechanical inspection services. The agreement will provide a minimum of twelve hours a week each of mechanical, electrical, and plumbing inspections. All inspections are scheduled for three days per week, minimum of four hours a day, minimum of twenty hours a week of building official services to include inspection activity and plan review. Building official services are provided five days a week. The fee for these services would be seventy-two percent of the permit fees that are collected by the city. One thing that should be stressed is because this is on a flex schedule, is that if we have more permit activity, they'll bring in more people or increase hours. With city commission approval, the two-year contract shall become effective July first, 2021, and expire June thirty, 2023. It contains a sixty-day termination clause for either party. This has been reviewed by the city attorney. We have a recommended motion before you, and you've got me reading this because Mr. Twing is, Mr. Tingley is not available tonight.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the two-year professional services agreement between the city of Mount Clemens and Safe Built Michigan LLC for building official plan review and building electrical, plumbing, and mechanical inspection services beginning July one, 2021, and authorize city staff to execute the agreement.
Moved by Commissioner Menzner?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Hammond. All right, discussion?
So, two things that I've harped about regularly when it comes to inspections is, number one, nights and weekends. And although the schedule that Mr. Johnson just read doesn't include nights and weekends, there is a provision in this under Addendum B that allows for the resident to choose nights and weekends at an additional cost. So, that kind of takes care of that. I also, one of the other things that I have repeatedly discussed is the separation of duties for our community development director. On one hand, we want him to do economic development. We want him to bring businesses and economic opportunity to the city. On the other hand, he's also doing permits and inspections and, and blight. Somehow, to me, those things don't go together, and I think they need to be separated. So, if we adopt this contract, Mr. Tingley will be able to concentrate more on economic opportunity, on community development. And I think that this will also answer some of the questions and the complaints that we have received from businesses and residents about, let's just say, service difficulties.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I think that summarizes it, but, Mr. Johnson, can you just tell us why, from your perspective, why you believe that, I wish Mr. Tingley was here, but understand why he cannot be here, but why we, why this is being looked at?
Well, this actually goes back to the commission's goals and objectives, something that the city commission was interested in. One thing that it does do for us, it creates a lot more flexibility in terms of, we're dealing with a company that has multiple people available that they can assign when needed. If a particular inspector who normally serves Mount Clemens is not available, they'll be able to send somebody else. If the workload suddenly increases because of a large project or several projects, they can bring other people in because they have more people. We only have one, and that person is only really scheduled to be here part of the time. They have other things they're doing, too.
So, the whole point was that we would, we could have more flexibility with this whole thing, more availability, because of some of the problems and the complaints that I think one interesting thing to keep in mind, too, to talk about the flexibility of staffing, is it was just recently announced that McLaren-Combe is building a whole nother facility there on Harrington, when you consider the number of inspections that, and permits issued that that's gonna take, I think it'll be...
It's in Clinton, I believe.
Glad it's Clinton, I'm glad it's gonna be in Clinton.
Yeah, but some of it was still, I think...
It's on the other, the other side from...
Is it?
Yeah, it's a vacant piece between Hillsdale and Grosebeck.
I thought it was...
On the other, on the other side from the parking structure.
Which is Clinton, correct?
Ah, I believe it's Clinton, yeah.
I thought that that was part of Mount Clemens.
I don't think so.
No, I mean, I met with Tom Bracy, and he said that we have a project in, you know, in your neighbor's piece of property, 'cause he's, I said, "Well, thank you for not turning another piece of property into a nonprofit."
I think they have a lot more work to do yet, or possible work to do yet. On the one addition they did, they didn't utilize all of Florida.
Does this company do anything with blight?
They do.
Are they, are they going to do something with blight?
Not under this contract.
Remember, we, we discussed that at the last meeting for, it was, it was an additional fifty thousand for, to bring... for, to bring in somebody for two days a week, wasn't it, part-time?
Yeah, but the, the company does do that type of work.
They do.
It's, it's not part of this.
But it's not part of this.
Correct.
It's something we could add eventually. If we wanted to.
We might want to do it on a, you know, temporary-type basis in order to get us over the hump a little bit.
Kind of like the sidewalks. You may have to do a push.
All right, anybody else want to add something? Okay. Roll call, please.
Krap?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Goodenough?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda 9C, confirm appointment of utilities director. Mr. Johnson? Oh, am I, am I, because I, no.
You're probably on the right one.
Yeah, I'm on the right one, okay. Right? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Mike, you're throwing me off here.
Let me click back and have to go back to the agenda.
I don't need any help with that.
Pursuant to the requirements of the Mount Clemens City Charter, I'm recommending the City Commission confirm my appointment of Leonard Bertrand as utilities director. Mr. Bertrand currently serves as utilities supervisor in charge of running the water treatment plant. As utilities director, he will supervise both water treatment and sewage treatment and be responsible, responsible for the distribution system as well. This is a very important and extremely responsible position. The safety of our entire water supply system is dependent on the person in this position. We have not had a utilities director in several years. The last one was Jeanette Best, left in August of 2018. Since then, we've had separate supervisors for the water plant and the sewage treatment plant, and those supervisors have shared responsibility, uh, along with Jeff for the distribution system. Mr. Bertrand has been with the city since November of 2001. He served as a water plant operator, chief water filtration plant operator, and utilities supervisor. He holds an F1 drinking water license, which is the highest license in water filtration offered by the state of Michigan. He also holds a Michigan S1 water distribution license, and he plans on obtaining the sewage treatment license as well. He will receive a salary of $90,000 per year, a vehicle and phone allowance, and our standard fringe benefit package.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move to confirm the appointment of Leonard Bertrand as the utilities director effective June 7, 2021.
I'll second it.
Moved by Commissioner Mensah, supported by Commissioner Voorhees. Uh, anyone have any questions or comments?
Welcome aboard, Lenny.
Well, he's been aboard.
Congratulations on the move.
Thank you, Don, uh, City Manager Johnson, for working something out.
Yes.
Keeping him aboard.
All right, roll call, please.
Mensah?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Goodenough?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Krap?
Yes. All right, now, 9D, resolution to waive interest and penalty associated with untimely property transfer affidavits. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. The Michigan Property Transfer Affidavit is a form that shows transfer of ownership. New property owners are usually supplied with this form, uh, at closing. The completed affidavit must be filed with, by the new owner with the assessor for the city or township where the property is located within 45 days of the transfer. State law calls for penalties to be assessed for late submittals, uh, for real property, other than real property classified as industrial or commercial. The penalty is $5 per day for each separate failure, beginning after the 45 days elapsed, up to a maximum of $200. Um, amounts are actually a little higher for industrial and commercial property. The local taxing jurisdiction, uh, that being us, may waive penalties, and Mount Clemens has done so in the past. We've never actually collected this fee. However, this was apparently done without a resolution of the City Commission, and we are now being told that such a resolution is required or we need to start collecting this fee. Our assessor does not find late submittals to be problematic, does not see a need for late fees, and recommends the City Commu- Commission approve the following resolution.
Mayor Krap, I move to waive the late fees for filing Form L dash 4260, the Michigan Property Transfer Affidavit.
Support.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Voorhees, supported by Commissioner Campbell. Anyone have any questions or comments?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Normally, when you have a closing, you, you have that document. What, and Darren is telling us that it doesn't matter that he gets it late?
Well, first of all, he doesn't get very many of them late, and when, when he does, he, he says it's not really much of a problem because he can identify who they are and.
Okay, it's probably more of a problem for the person buying because if the state doesn't have that form, you can't declare it a tax. So, or declare it as your, uh.
Homestead.
Yeah, homestead. So, I'm okay with it.
Anyone else? All right, roll call, please.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Goodenough?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Krap?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Agenda Item 9E, newsletter. Mr. Johnson?
Don't you need a motion first? And then we go into the description?
Technically, yes.
Technically, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Would any, anyone like to make a motion?
Move to approve the printing and distribution of the Clementine's Newsletter on a quarterly basis at a cost of $1,410.98 per publication.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Campbell.
Yeah, good to Campbell.
Mr. Johnson?
We've been doing this with CNG Newspapers now for 13 years. Uh, they print, uh, Clementine's Newsletter and distribute it with the journal. Uh, we continue to receive positive feedback from residents and various other readers. And we find it to be a very cost-effective way of communicating with the public, and we wish to continue it.
Uh, does anybody have any questions or comments?
No matter how many times we publish this, no one will ever get it straight which day's garbage pickup is or not.
Yes. Sorry, Jeff, it's just never going to happen. But I will say, I think that Nikki has done a great job at really revamping the, um, the look of it and the layout of it. We'll obviously keep changing that when we do the branding, um, the branding of the city. But we've tried to include some new items in it, um, tried to freshen it up so that it's not like, oh, look at, I can use this year's and exchange it from this year's. So, um, we're trying to make sure that it's fresh every time. So, if any of you have anything to, to submit to the Clementine, feel free to add anything. We, we encourage participation for, for it, so.
And I just wanted to mention that this, the Clementine will be a wonderful opportunity for messages of inclusion and diversity in the city to satisfy the strategic planning goal that we already discussed tonight. Then, and just, can you tell us, uh, I'm just interested, what is the, the, what was the cost last year? And what was the percent increase?
Uh, I couldn't tell you, but I think it's probably pretty much the same.
Okay.
The new feature that I started, um, in the last issue was, um, meet, meet your neighbor. I don't know if any of you caught that. Um, and it included the first recipient of meet your neighbor, I don't know if it was recipient, but first participant of meet your neighbor was an African-American resident. We're trying very much so to bridge the gap.
Cool.
So. Intentional. So, uh, anybody else have any questions or comments on that? Okay, we will go ahead and roll call.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Goodenough?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Krap?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Purchase and payments of invoices?
Move to approve purchase, purchases and payment of invoices as presented.
Support.
Mr. Johnson?
I'm going to ask that number five be held for, for two weeks. We'll leave that out tonight.
What is number?
Do you want to amend your?
That was the computer hardware.
It's not on there? It's already gone?
We do have the four.
It's already amended. Okay. All right, anybody have any questions?
No, I'm wrong, it's high-tech, right? It's on there, it's on the second page or the third.
Okay, so can you amend your motion then to not include?
Uh, I amend the motion to not include, uh, item number five in the statement.
Okay. Now, does any, anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, uh, roll call, please.
Fournier?
Yes.
Goodenough?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Krap?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Agenda Item 10, consent agenda?
Who would approve consent agenda as presented?
Support.
Support.
Okay, roll call, please.
Goodenough?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Krap?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Item 11, City Manager's Report?
Thank you. COVID-19, the latest news is that we've, we have lifted the state of emergency in Mount Clemens, and we are meeting in person tonight. It's our first regular in-person meeting, uh, since, uh, I left that blank March 2nd, I believe, 2020. We also reduced our mask mandate for city buildings to match current state requirements, which make masks optional, uh, if you've been vaccinated. Vaccines are now available, uh, for anyone age 12 or older, uh, and there's a link to the McCombe County Vaccine Central site. We settled the dial ride contract last Friday. Tentative agreement with the bus drivers and dispatchers. Assuming this gets ratified on time, uh, we'll have it on your next agenda for the City Commission to approve it. With this, when this contract is signed, we will have all bargaining units under contract until June 30th of 2020.
Twenty.
We had the car show and cruise last weekend. I put this in here because this comes out on Thursday, so it was out, uh, in time to give some, maybe some little bit of a push to it. Nikki already talked about the drive-in movie night. Uh, we're showing Ghostbusters. Nikki, you didn't say whether that's the old Ghostbusters or the new Ghostbusters. And I'm excited about seeing the Marshmallow Man.
We'll have photo ops.
Somebody please send that photo to me.
The fireworks are scheduled. We are planning to do fireworks, uh, on June 25th. Rain date is June 26th. Do you have anything to update as far as the county property or not? The use of the county property or not?
Um, I haven't heard back yet.
Okay.
But, um, I don't expect it to be a problem. All we're going to have to do is show articles of insurance, which is not a problem.
Okay, but for now, all I can say is, uh, the Riverbank.
Right. We're hopeful that, you know, people can bring their chairs and bikes and be able to utilize that to relieve the pressure off of the riverbank.
Okay, then we've got the future agendas.
All right, this, uh, is the portion of the meeting for the second opportunity for the public to participate. Um, we allow two minutes at this, uh, at this time of the agenda. We ask that you come forward to the microphone, that you give us your full name and your residential address. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Anyone on Zoom that would like to speak? Okay. Okay. All right, moving on to Commissioner comments. Mr. Campbell?
I just want to say that I am grateful that we have a utilities director. We now have another, uh, excellent department head to match the two that are behind us here tonight. So, thank you to the city manager for, uh, having us have safe water here in Mount Clemens. Thank you.
Commissioner Hammond?
I want to thank you for the Juneteenth proclamation, I appreciate that. Also, this past Friday, um, along with the Vance and McCombe and the Clinton River Watershed Council, also, there was, um, some volunteers from Consumer Energy that helped clean up Shady Side Park. So, I thought that was very nice of Vance and McCombe to put it together to help clean up our parks here in Mount Clemens. That's all I have for tonight.
Excellent. Commissioner Fournier?
I just want to thank, uh, former Bar- Mayor Barb Dempsey for all her years of service as the chair of the parade company, or our own parade company, if you will. But I, a special thank you to Patrick and to Mickey for taking on that challenge, and it is a big job, and we know you will do an absolutely outstanding job. And I'll be a volunteer for whatever you need. And again, congratulations to Lenny for, uh, and to Mr. Johnson for working out a, a good, um, contract and a compromise, and I'm so glad he's going to be staying with us. Uh, we really do appreciate both of them for doing that. And that's all I have for tonight, thank you.
Thanks. Commissioner Goodenough? Commissioner Voorhees?
I must say, it's good to be back at the table with all of us. I think we get a lot more done in person than we do over Zoom. But thank God we had Zoom to, uh, conduct our business. I'd also like to, uh, welcome Nancy Carter, our deputy clerk, uh, to the table. She's done a nice job, she pronounced all the names correctly, so that's kind of nice. So, you're doing a great, you're doing a great job. Great job with the car cruise. Um, I tried to get downtown, and it, believe it or not, it was really jammed up and.
Even Friday, I think it was jammed.
Yeah, it was, it, it was great. It was great to see all those people down here. Santa Parade. You guys are really going to have, um, a project there. You know, as you know, uh, I did the staging of the parade, uh, some 35 years ago when the bank was the sponsor. It takes a lot of people, so.
You're hiring.
Yeah, I know. The more, the more I talk, the deeper I get. I get it, I get it.
Get the shovel.
But, but it, it was, believe me, it was a lot of fun, and it was great to see the kids on the, you know, on the, on the route. So, good luck with that. And with that, once a Clementite, always a Clementite.
Thank you. Mr. Mensah?
Uh, Friday the 4th, we had senior appreciation night up at the high school. The kids, uh, against the coaches and some alumni. We had, uh, and, and I ended up being a judge for a three-point throw contest, and everybody got a 10 because they deserved it. Um, I, it was a fun night, we had a lot of great food. Coach Tramo made, he knew every player, he knew, uh, he said wonderful things about each player, and it showed how much he cared about the players and how much the players have actually contributed to the school and to the city. So, there are some people to thank for this. First, there was a, a committee of us that have met several times, you know, to try and put this together, and, and we had to change dates because the track team, you know, were, half the track team plays on the basketball team. So, we ended up changing dates several times. So, to, uh, Co- I, I want to say specifically, thank you to Coach Musky Valley, um, for designing the flyer, talking to the alumni, and talking, uh, you know, talking with the players. Um, I want to thank Dawn Sumter for, um, basically organizing everything, uh, and, and keeping us on track. Jamie Collins from the school board, she made all the arrangements with the school so that we could use the cafeteria so that they, um, you know, the doors would be open so we could get between the cafeteria and the, uh, you know, the gym and opening, and making sure doors were open for the public to come in. Um, and I'd like to thank, uh, Mayor Krap for her donation to the, uh, uh, food. Commissioner Fournier for her donation to the food. Dawn Sumter for, uh, securing the cake.
Uh, Dawn Sumter for, uh, securing the cake. And one of the things that we provided for the kids is, uh, Coach Muskie Valley had pictures of the kids playing, and so we bought frames with big white, white, you know, borders around them, and the coaches and the players and, and everybody, uh, signed, um, signed, uh, the frames. And also, uh, to Earl Rickman, who was the announcer, um, uh, as I said, the kids played a, a, they did a three-point contest, and then they did some kind of throwing contest that I don't know what the heck they were doing, but Coach Trammell won everything. He, he got every single shot, he missed nothing, um, and he was phenomenal, and the kids were applauding him, and I don't think they've had the opportunity then, because then they played the game to actually play with, you know, with Coach Trammell. So, it was really wonderful. It was a great event, and for those that did come, uh, I thank you for being there. I wanted to point out that our school, our high school has thirty-four graduates this year. The valedictorian is Carla Carrion Elycia, and a salut- salatorian is Christian Lara Hernandez. Um, congratulations to everybody, if you guys didn't see it, there was a beautiful spread in the McComb Daily the other day with pictures of all of our graduates in their caps and gowns. It was really wonderful. Um, the, uh, McComb Daily is doing this little thing that they've done every year for lots of years called the Best of the Best, and Mount Clemens businesses are portrayed there or nominated there in multiple categories. Max and Ollie's, I think, is in four different co- uh, categories. Best gift shop, best, uh, antique shop, um, most fun place to shop, along with Pollyanna's, which is on North Avenue over, um, but, uh, Bass City Bistro was nominated multiple times, Miller Brothers was nominated, Your Mother's was nominated for the best chicken wings, Orleans for the best sport bar, Thai Orchid was nominated, Cellar One-O-Four, um, our attorneys, the Shamasco Brothers, who are on northbound Grashit, were nominated, Cass Auto, Crossneck Carpet, um, La Croix Family, uh, Eye Doctor right there on, uh, Cass near the high school, Kratz Flores, uh, Plumbers right on Avery, Young's, um, Leslie Tire, um, and, uh, for candy throughout McComb County, two, we got two, champagne and pops. So, our farmer's market has been nominated as one of the best farmer's markets in McComb County. Um, our fireworks have been nominated as the best local fireworks. Our downtown shopping area has been nominated as the best local shopping area. The best jeweler, Thomas Nevin. Um, best meat counter, Heflings. Um, so, uh, I, best travel and entertainment is the Mount Clemens Ice Arena, um, and the Emerald Theater was nominated multiple times, one of them for best local fun venue, and something else, uh, but, and also, uh, uh, artist music was, uh, nominated. So, I'm asking you to please go onto the McComb Daily website and affirm that we have the best businesses in all these categories. Please check them off, please now, nominate our businesses and, and, you know, give them a boost, and for whatever you do, shop local first. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, I think everyone covered pretty much everything that was on my list, but, um, the only other thing I was gonna say was happy birthday to Mr. Campbell and to Commissioner Hammond. And Commissioner Goodenough. So, uh, three of us, three of our commissioners. So, um, not all today, but in the last couple weeks, so happy birthday to everybody. Obviously, uh, the, the sign, what is your-
Gemini.
You're all Gemini's. Oh, boy. It explains some things. All right, you guys, well, I think that's all I have, and, um, so thank you, everyone, for the in-person meeting, I really appreciate, uh, the team being back together, feels good. It does.
This was great.
I agree completely, so, thank you, everybody, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Support.
Thank you, everyone. I guess we didn't roll call, oh, well.